It is now four o'clock, time for the student county board to come to order. Let's say and we'll sit aside.
To the wire, the United States of America, the United Republic, the British Empire, the United Nations, the United Arab Emirates, the United States of Justice.
If it's time, I would be sure to approve the general motion for your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
I have a recommendation to approve the agenda, do I have this in motion? Second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carried. Superintendent's report.
Madam President, I have five items to segment in my superintendent's report. We have, first of all, one of our faculty members from Flood's and Hill Elementary School here today. We want to recognize her on last week's to read some information by special order.
Ms. Harrison is one of two National Elementary Honor Society of Dodgers of 2017. So only one of two in our entire commission, so we're very excited about that. Some of the projects that she and her students have created that are merit recognition, she collected over twenty-six hundred dollars in funds to purchase duffel bags and personal goods supplies for foster students. She collected over thirty-eight hundred fifty items to provide the students in need and she collected five hundred negative she boxes for soldiers. So she and her students have accomplished a lot and we're very proud of them. She was also the 2017 President of the National Teacher Association. So let's give her a big round of applause.
Two sponsors in the United States. Congratulations, we're so proud. Great, congratulations. Special guest with us here tonight, Mr. Daniel Sheen. Please come forward, sir. I'll let him introduce himself and he's got a couple of our employees that he'd like to recognize as he can possibly.
My name is Daniel Sheen, I represent the Mississippi Forest Department of Darla Durr, Department of Defense Bourbon War. We promote broadways with reporters and those who are hiring and supporting our bourbon bourbon servers. This past March at our Florida banquet award, we recognized the Southern County two awards. And the first award is the Southern Civil War Detective Southern County Schools Emily Ballard. So here, you come up please. Herna Oppenheimer was heaven's. We want to thank you for supporting our service. And the next one is Freddie Joseph. I did pass that around, this is a great attention, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. Part of Southern County Schools, our board members, and I appreciate all the efforts of our military men and women. We appreciate our administrators to accommodate those. And Mr. Sheen, in attendance, you won this award, was it last year or two years?
Last year.
Last year. And we also recognize Mr. Sheen, thank him. They presented his at school and how honored that I was invited out here. It was a complete surprise, Mr. Sheen. Mr. Sheen, Mr. Ballard, and Mr. Joseph, we appreciate y'all's commitment and certainly those of our military service. This time I would like to introduce Center Hill High School Director, Mr. Doug Payne. Please come forward, he's got a student that would like to recognize his students.
I'd like to introduce Morgan Atkins. She currently serves as senior class officer, she's a member of the FCS. She's the lead women's choir leadership team. A member of National Honor Society, City Council, Superintendent Youth Leadership Council, and Pony Express, which is our school newspaper. Finally, what brings us here today is Morgan's president of Youth and Government Club, which she founded last year. She was named this year's most outstanding senator at this year's session of Mississippi Youth and Government. I want her today to recognize her being selected to represent the state of Mississippi in the United States Senate Youth Program. She wanted to talk for just a minute about her opportunity before we present her with her certificate.
Good afternoon, I just want to thank y'all for the time to kind of be able to speak about my experience. I also just want to thank y'all for all the support that you give to the Southern County Schools because if I've learned any kind of foolish experience, education is fundamental and none of me or my peers in this program would be where we were without the support of our school districts, our administrators, our teachers, so just thank you for everything that y'all do. So the United States Youth Program is a delegation of one hundred and four students from all fifty states, the Washington DC area, and two students from the Department of Defense overseas faces. We are brought together by the Hearst Foundation, who sponsors the entire event, and we get to meet with super cool people like Congressman John Lewis. We met the president and vice president, we met Senator Angus King from Maine, Senator Amy Kupchak from Minnesota. Just this all-star team of elected officials who serve public service the best way that anyone can think of and such a humbling and humanizing experience to be able to see the federal government on this level. The biggest takeaway though is getting to interact with all the rest of the delegates. We come from one hundred and four different backgrounds, all these different places, and just being able to learn from other people about their experiences was so cool. One case that really stood out was we held a Bible study on Sunday night, the first day that we were there, and we brought together this group of like twenty of us, but there were five kids there who didn't even believe in God. But they just wanted to be there to see and to learn and to experience it. And that's just the open-mindedness and the compassion and the caring that I see in this group. And I just wanted to let y'all know that I see a lot of hope in the future for really young people who want to lead our country and who want to be in public service. And I just thank you all for supporting us so much.
This time I'd ask our director of athletics, Mr. Anthony Jenkins, if you'd come forward. We have a special group of young people to recognize.
Good afternoon. We are excited about having the 2018 five-a-boy boys basketball team from Olive Branch here with us this afternoon. I'd like to introduce the coaches first, Coach Pitt, Coach Rumball. Assistant Coach Jones. Assistant House Coach Jeff. Athlete director Jane Gaspar. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Rumball and I think I'll take a few things about his team from this past year.
Yes, my name is Coach Rumball and it's a pleasure to be here this afternoon for you. We took great pride in representing Olive Branch this year in great pride and representing the Southern County. These boys have worked very, very hard and I couldn't be more proud of them. I'm going to announce them right now, to start out. We have one senior on the team this year. And so I will, there's twenty-seven kids total on the program, so I'll be bringing back twenty-six. So hopefully we'll have a chance to do this again if it all works out. But first I'd like to introduce our senior Kelvin Allen. Next, then junior DJ Jeffries. Junior Joshua Cooper, Joshua Cooper. Junior Joshua Stevenson. Octavian Wall. Exactly Jones. Jayden Whitney. Caesar Gutierrez. I'd also like to mention that Caesar is our scholar athlete of the year with a four-point zero-four grade point average. CJ Owens. Sophomore Cameron Matthews. Sophomore Wes Taylor. Sophomore Kyron Flitz. Interior Jones. Senator Kitchen. And I'd like to bring up David Pickerman.
Congratulations, keep up the great work. At this time I've got a teacher spotlight segment. I'd like to introduce the principal of Horn Lake High School, Mr. Andy Ward.
First of all, thank you for having us here today, the Spotlight Horn Lake High School. Today we have Mr. Cole Bostick, he is a US history teacher as well as our executive, one of our executive staff teachers. He went to Horn Lake High School, went off to college and came back, come back and have an impact in Horn Lake High School. He's also very involved with student organizations like marriage, marriage and counseling, things like that. But he's a very important part of our school and we look forward to having him forever at Horn Lake High School. Mr. Bostick.
Thank you all for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'd like to understand before you and let you know about some of the great things that are happening at Horn Lake High School. In August of 2017, at the beginning of the school year, the administrative team introduced a new school culture model in order to try and create a more positive-driven student population as well as a method for teachers to rely on to keep expectations high both in the classroom and on the field. Dr. Rudy Canvelli teaches that a school's culture is basically the school's lifestyle. Therefore, we acknowledge that to increase achievement levels and to encourage a more productive learning environment, we must change the way that we live and operate in the school on a daily basis. This culture shift is called SOAR, self-control, optimism, accountability, and respect. And while many teachers have their own strategies and tricks of the trade to encourage a positive culture in the classroom, the SOAR model serves as a unified effort to raise academic and behavioral expectations and standards across the entire school. In essence, this is our way of raising the bar. If you would, please turn your attention to the video screen, we'd like to show you the video of some of the things happening at Horn Lake High School.
Self-control, the ability to subdue our impulses in order to achieve longer-term goals.
To remain calm in times of trials, hold back in moments of anger, and hold our eyes on the prize.
Optimism, our hopefulness and confidence about our successes to the light ahead.
To dream of our futures as doctors, lawyers.
Bankers.
Public servants.
Engineers.
Politicians.
Whatever we can dream of.
Accountability, the condition of being responsible.
Accepting the consequences of our actions, both positive and negative, to own up to our own mistakes and to learn from them.
Respect.
The feeling of deep admiration for someone.
Their abilities.
Their qualities.
And their achievements.
We practice self-control.
We remain optimistic.
We hold ourselves accountable.
We respect others.
We are the next generation.
We are the hope for tomorrow.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are the Eagles and we soar.
I think one of my favorite things about Horn Lake High School is the variety of people and teachers. We have a lot of teachers that teach differently and I think it's good to have an experience with each one.
Most of our little teaching, they're all cool and the principals, you know how they can relate to things we do. I've definitely seen more intentionality, be it the administration, following through with students, supporting them in their academic progression. I've seen more purpose-driven teachers, people who are here because they want to be here. That's one of the reasons why I came back, actually moved away out of state and I didn't find another job, I came back and came right back to the same classroom with the same students because it meant so much to me, the relationships that we form here with our students and with each other and the administration is just very collegial.
I think one of the biggest reasons that our school is as great as it is is because Mr. O'Callaghan, the principal, he has supported us in so many ways. He's given us so many opportunities and so many chances and I believe he's one of the greatest principals and he is a big reason why our school is amazing.
Here the academics are really strong, especially in the AP area. In my biology class, we do a lot of hands-on things, we do labs, we work with dialysis tubing and we just learn a lot, not only about the science and academics, we learn a lot about ourselves and how to carry on once we graduate.
I've seen teachers feel empowered. I've seen a common theme throughout the building about what our school-wide expectations are and I've seen students respond in a positive fashion to those character traits that we're trying to emphasize.
I actually enjoy working for Horn Lake High School. I'm not a native of Mississippi, but I do live in Olive Branch, so as you know, there are many schools I pass, but I choose to come here, thirty-minute drive every morning. This is my sixth year here and I've just had some positive, great interactions with students. I've met some extraordinary students over the years and some great coworkers, teachers, administrators, and just all of that combined is what drives me and why I continue loving to come here every day.
This school year, our suspensions are down by ten percent and our insubordination write-ups are down by twenty-three percent. And we believe this is a direct result of a culture shift within our school. And to continue to push this effort forward, an assistant principal has formed a teacher leadership committee and a student leadership committee to develop ideas for using this model practically in the school, especially in celebrating good behavior and positivity. These committees are assisting and helping the SOAR model become ingrained into the foundation of the culture of our school. As we look to the future, it is our hope that this model will continually encourage students to take ownership of their education and that their increasing intrinsic motivation will be the driving force within the classroom. As students take ownership of their actions, teachers will be able to focus more on the student's education rather than on their discipline. You see, students at Horn Lake High School are capable of excellence and if we're able to instill in them a strong foundation of self-control, optimism, accountability, and respect, we know that they will mount up with wings as eagles and truly soar towards greatness. Thank you for your time today.
Great presentation. Mr. Bostick, you have been a great representative of Horn Lake High School as a student and as a teacher. Mr. Lewis, before you head out, I'd like to recognize that video, I don't know how much you all, I mean, that is a talent and we appreciate what you're doing there because that video is high quality. And that was like something that people pay a lot of money for and I mean, so you have to be committed to your part there. And Mr. Sheen, we appreciate all you're doing and exactly what Mr. Bostick said, I think SOAR is the theme I've seen it throughout this year and it's amazing what y'all are doing and so just keep up the great work, we appreciate it.
Thank you, we thank your support.
Thank you, please.
Attorney's report.
Yes, Madam President, I have one location I would like to report.
All right, I need a motion to approve this for March fifth, twenty eighteen, and March twenty-second, twenty eighteen board meetings. Do I have this in motion?
I have a motion to approve to March fifth and March twenty-second, board meeting here.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. Consent agenda, your recommendations are.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. New business. Excuse me, just a second. A malfunction on that. Okay, I have a twenty-eighteen jumpstart program, Mr. Spencer.
This is my Title I Elementary School, we offer a jumpstart camp during the month of June for returning students, very great students with intense intervention with early literacy and numeracy skills. There will be no cost for the students to attend this camp and transportation will be provided and Title I money is going to be used to pay for the cost of the camp. So this is the first year for this and we're hoping we're hoping very well that you can continue the service, but we're excited about the opportunity.
Second, excited. Help our students read.
Yes, ma'am.
Your pleasure, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the two thousand eighteen jumpstart program.
I have a recommendation to approve the twenty-eighteen jumpstart program. Do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Second, any questions or comments?
I have one question, do you know how many students are about, how many students you're gonna have?
We're hoping fifty from each school, fifty from each top school, first come, first served. You can take more, take more, and turn the job away.
Right, right.
So we really don't know the exact numbers, don't we?
Okay, I'd be interested to know what the numbers are as we gather, as we gather later, just to see where we're.
Say what?
Right.
Does, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. Okay, now we come to the twenty-eighteen summer school proposal, elementary school E S Y, Mr. Spencer.
Let's see, the district is proposing a plan to provide elementary extended school year for students in grades three through five. These are students who have failed at least one, one subject with a sixty-four below in their A to D L A math, science, and social studies. If the student successfully remediates the necessary skills, he or she will be promoted to the advanced grade. And this program will be held at South Haven Intermediate School from June fourth and twenty-ninth, from eight to eleven-thirty. Students will be required to pay a hundred dollars and transportation will not be provided. Something their parents will have to pay for to get a ticket in front. And Dr. Stewart and Mr. Darnell will oversee this program at South Haven Intermediate School.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the two thousand eighteen third grade reading camp.
I have a recommendation to approve the.
That will see, she can tell that.
Oh, yes, that's right, I thought I skipped. Which one did I skip? So you are ready for the recommendation to approve the two thousand eighteen summer school proposal, don't they?
Okay, that's what I think. Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the two thousand eighteen summer school proposal.
Okay, I have a recommendation to approve the twenty-eighteen summer school program, proposal for elementary school E S Y, do I have, is it in motion? Do I have a second? Are there any comments or questions besides the boot I made? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. Okay, let's go back up to B.
The literacy-based promotion act requires all third-grade students to read over a level before they exit third grade. They're given an assessment, an apt assessment in April and are given a chance to retest before school is out in May. Those students who do not pass the retest in May, the district would like to offer a program, summer camp, for four weeks in the month of June to provide intense remediation for these students because they are allowed one last opportunity to retest on June twenty-ninth. And so this too will be held at South Haven Intermediate School from June fourth to twenty-ninth and the students will attend from eight to eleven-thirty each day Monday through Friday. And once again, Dr. Stewart and Mr. Darnell will oversee the program.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the two thousand eighteen third grade reading camp.
I have a recommendation to approve the twenty-eighteen third grade reading camp. Do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. Statement of revenue, revenue and expenditures February twenty-eighteen of these grades.
Since the whole board meeting has been a positive thing, I'm gonna carry that to agree with you for that. Uh, very positive. So our general revenues are up by about five and a half million, that's mainly due to additional afternoons. I did sneak ahead for y'all for March because our January, February, March, and April, it's kind of nippy as to when, so people paid a little bit early, but it looks like three days in March, we're gonna still be ahead two and a half million. So, which is about what we expected in March for afternoons, so we're still thrilled. But as of any February, this report, we're up five and a half million. Our general fund expenditures are only up one point two percent. That's actually slightly less than anticipated, so we have definitely done a great job of not spending everything we've budgeted. So all fund expenditures are up about six percent, but that's mainly when you're looking at your special revenue, your capital projects, and your debt service. Our capital projects, our construction, definitely, sure, compared to last year, which is exactly as much. It's a great positive report in our statement.
Sure, yes.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue expenditures February twenty-eighteen.
I have a recommendation to approve the statement of revenue expenditures for February twenty-eighteen. Do I have this in motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion carried. Statement of cash flow, February 2018, Ms. Graves.
Our district bank's cash balance is right at one-hundred, one-hundred-seven million, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine. That includes the invested balance of twenty-six million, five seventy-three, six thirty-four. All funds' cash balances, one forty-six, nine sixty-eight, eight twenty-nine, which is about, district bank spends about seventy-three percent of that. We are starting to see the revenues by the command for our federal funds that we didn't include, but that's good. So by the time we hit the March report, April, that will significantly increase what's spent.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for February 2018.
I have a recommendation to accept the statement of cash flow for February 2018. Do I have this in a motion?
Make that motion.
Second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Combined balance sheet, February 2018, Ms. Graves.
The fund balance for all general funds for February is one-hundred-and-eleven million, five sixteen oh forty-six, compared to last year, one oh two, five twenty-six, eight twenty-five. So approximately up eight percent due to those increases in after-labor and keeping our expenditures down. All funds' fund balance is at one forty-two, oh six, oh six, oh eight, and it's a great report.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for February 2018.
I have a recommendation to accept the combined balance sheet for February 2018. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Good report. Certification of bank reconciliations for February 2018, Ms. Graves.
All these statements have been reviewed by our reception.
You have good reports.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve certification of bank reconciliations for February 2018.
I have a recommendation to accept the certification of bank reconciliations for February 2018. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Revised Board Policy, I H A, grading system, Ms. Graves.
Yes, ma'am, we're asking for revision to this policy. The N D U has changed their guidelines regarding how state tests count as part of the student's grade for English and algebra. Beginning in 2018, 2019, students taking English to algebra one the first time, it assesss and will count as twenty-five percent if they're correct. And so our policy is being limited to include that information.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the viable policy, I H A, grading system.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised board policy, I H A, grading system. Do I have this in a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Revised Board Policy, I H E, promotion and retention, Ms. Graves.
Yes, ma'am, we're asking for a revision to remove the statement regarding taking initial coursework in summer school. We offered extended school year program, which means students take coursework in this credit program. And so that's, we're asking that statement to be removed.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the viable policy, I H E, promotion and retention.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised board policy, I H E, promotion and retention. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Revised Board Policy, J D, student discipline, Ms. Graves.
Yes, ma'am, this policy is being revised to add an additional level five for events, um, credits and all that sort of thing.
Recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, J D,
I have a recommendation to approve the revised board policy, J D, student discipline. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Revised Board Policy, J G F C D, early release, late arrival, Ms. Graves.
Yes, ma'am, our juniors and seniors have access to early release and late arrival if they've met all of the course requirements. Our policy previously said that students will attend school for cheap class, but with changes in dual-credit opportunities, students are now attending school, attending classes at the school, online, events of that nature. So we wanted to make that available so that students can attend cheap class for cheap classes because we didn't want to discourage anyone from taking advantage of those opportunities in order to attend cheap class.
She's got a good policy, madam. Madam President, I recommend the board to approve revised board policy, J G F C D, early release, late arrival.
I have a recommendation to approve the revised board policy, J G F C D, early release, late arrival. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. Personnel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Williams.
I'm not, Mr. Allen. Pages one through three are recommendations. Pages four through eight are personnel changes. Page nine, you'll see an employee have hired that has yet to receive a better award at Mississippi State, so we'll need to take that license substitute rate of pay. And once she receives her license, her pay will reflect the board approval, teacher pays her pay. Page ten is a number from Mr. Allen. You approve the job description for the executive director of academic services. This is revision to that job title, having one responsibility to that. Pages eleven and thirteen are job descriptions for the executive director of academic services. Page fourteen is a request from Mr. Spencer for pizza camps, offer that exclusive duty for work of eighty hours, preparing, delivering, destruction for the camps. Page fifteen is a list of us teachers that have worked at the camp. And page sixteen is just a FYI sheet for school board. Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
I have a recommendation to accept personnel as presented. Do I have this in a, does the motion? Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, aye, it's had it, the motion carried. At this time, we have public comments, since this is our first board meeting of the month. Do we have anyone that wants to come and say something to the board? Request to appear, are you, I have a Ms. Ferguson, Ms. Ferguson, since you're, you have a student matter, we will hear you in the executive session. So at this time, do I have a, I need a consideration motion to go in the executive session for student matter, one litigation.
I make motion and would consider going into executive session to view, um, request to appear in the litigation and the court.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chase will come out and let you know if we're gonna stay in the executive session. Mr. Finley, how are you today? I don't want to leave you out of anything.
That's what you come, you come with wants.